Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, October 17th, 2016. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone, once again, and welcome. This time, I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being videotaped by Dartmouth Community Television for future broadcast. And also, if you have any cell phones or electronic devices, if you could please silence them at this time. Roll call, Mrs. Boucher.
Mr. News?
Yeah.
Dr. Karafotos here.
Present.
Dr. Jenkins here.
Here.
And I'm student rep, Stacy Condon.
Welcome. Thank you very much. At this time, the Dartmouth School Committee has allotted 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak tonight on any of the agenda articles. So if anyone would like to come up and speak on any of tonight's agenda items, I'd ask you to do so at this time. I'll take that as a big no. Thank you. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of October 3rd, 2016.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. News, a second by Dr. Karafotos. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the executive session minutes of October 3rd, 2016.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matters for which they were intended is completed.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. News and a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? I would just like to ask, Ms. Boucher, before the next meeting, if you and I could just sit down and briefly meet to discuss any executive session minutes that are available for release. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation on canine therapy by an occupational therapist here in Dartmouth, Kathleen DeCampos. I'd ask Kathleen to come on up.
Mr. Chair, if I might start that introduction?
Absolutely. Sorry, Dr. Gifford.
That's all right. So Kathleen came to us about two weeks ago, actually asked us months ago, to come onboard and talk to us about this idea about bringing therapy dogs into our schools for a particular student. So seeing that we are, as you know, very focused in on our social-emotional well-being of our students, we were really, really excited to listen and hear what she had to say about this, so I think you will too. Just to let you know, the administration does support this. We have not, I know that Kathleen has spoken to two of our principals and not our others as of yet, but also, just to let you know that the policy subcommittee has met to kind of start to look at this, how our policy would change as far as animals being in the school. So we would then, with your support, we would continue to update that to support this program.
All right.
With that, my turn over to Kathleen.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'd like to talk to you about something that's very near and dear to my heart, animal-assisted therapy. I first used therapy dogs 16 years ago at Rhode Island Hospital in the neurological unit and saw firsthand how they made a difference with recovery and rehabilitation, as well as the patient's social-emotional well-being. So animal-assisted therapy is not new. Its first reported use was in 1792 by the York Retreat Institute for the Mentally Ill. Then, in the 1800s, Florence Nightingale documented the benefits of using animals with wounded soldiers during the Crimean War. And Dr. Charles Mayo from the Mayo Clinic found that he used to bring his little Yorkie, Smokey, which there's actually a statue in his honor in Ohio, and he found that the effect was remarkable on wounded soldiers, particularly with that social-emotional well-being. Three of Mayo Clinic's major facilities have animal-assisted therapy programs. Primarily, in the past, therapy dogs have been used by psychotherapists, social workers, and OTs. Now educators and speech-language pathologists are also using animal-assisted therapy. And when I say animal-assisted therapy, I'm also referring to canine-assisted therapy because more common than not, you see therapy dogs. So Melissa Winkle, who's an OT, she's been practicing for over 12 years down in Albuquerque, New Mexico, she actually believes in this particular service and has trained OTs all over the world, especially to use therapy dogs in school settings. So you might be thinking, well, what are the benefits to using a canine-assisted therapy in our school system? Well, the benefits are huge. It improves self-regulation, increases social interactions, increases self-image, and even reading ability, as well as decreasing anxiety and stress. So I wish I had my dog with me now so she could discreetly read some life stress level. There's been a lot of research that has been done, and in 2014, studies indicated that of the students that participated in the program and read to dogs, there was a 12 to 30, sorry about that, 12 to 30 percent increase in reading fluency. There was another study done in 2004 over a 13-month period, and they used the Reading Education Assistance Dogs Program, better known as REEDS, and they found that students who participated in that study gained about two grade levels. So the world is ever-changing. Our students present with a different set of needs compared to what we did when we were youngsters. Technology and video games have limited social interactions. It's time for a paradigm shift in our schools to help our students who are struggling academically, behaviorally, emotionally, socially, and physically. I know you're going to have concerns, so there are two that I'm going to address this evening. One is allergies. So according to the Asthma and Allergy Foundation, only about 15 percent of the population have animal allergies. There is not one reported death or anaphylactic allergic reaction to an animal allergy. The most significant reaction that one would have would be a rash. A typical allergic reaction would be watery eyes and a runny nose. So they recommend to limit the amount of allergies for someone who has it, is to have proper hygiene, and to not have the child or person touch their nose or eyes after handling the dog. In addition to that, the dog needs to be bathed and well-groomed. The other thing I wanted to mention is Dartmouth Public School policy. No animals will be allowed in an area where they may negatively impact the health of any student. The other issue is fear. So you never, ever, ever want to approach someone, whether they have a fear or not. What you do is, when you're working with a therapy dog, you always ask the individual, would you like to say hello? Would you like to pet the dog? That sort of thing, if you're walking down the hall or something. You would always be respectful for anyone because we all come with different associated experiences in life. You know, someone may have been bit by a dog or chased, and you want to respect that. The therapy dog organization that I'm associated with is Pet Partners. They're actually affiliated with Tufts Veterinary and School of Medicine, and they were the first organization to coin the term "animal-assisted therapy." They are a nonprofit organization, and they test and evaluate the dog, as well as the handler, for aptitude and skills. The team goes through 24 rigorous exercises. What they're looking for is a dog that is predictable and responsible, and always under the control of the handler. The team is reevaluated every two years, unlike many of the other organizations around, and that's why I chose them. And according to Pet Partners, there is no national or state legislature for bringing dogs into schools. It's up to the individual districts to give a pause up. So some of their requirements include having a health screening by a licensed veterinarian, which includes having a rabies vaccination, and the tag has to be worn by the dog. It has to be free of any signs of health, a negative fecal and hot worm test as well. And also, Pet Partners has one of their own special criteria. They do not want dogs eating raw protein because of scientific research that they have done. So they're the only organization at this point in time that doesn't allow a raw diet. Which was that? So now we'll go on. So, you know, the vision for using animal-assisted therapy in the schools would be that. You know, it would be more than just having a dog in the room. The registered therapy dog would be part of the treatment intervention, goal-oriented, helping our students improve their ability to perform everyday tasks. Some of the areas that I would be working on as an occupational therapist with students would be core stability, gross motor, and strengthening. And as you can see, there's a little boy on a scooter board, and in front of him, he has a biscuit. And so what he's doing, he's working on coordination, gross motor strengthening, core stability, and he's going down the hall. And at the end, when he's able to reach the dog, then he's able to reward himself by giving the dog a biscuit. Another area I would be addressing would be upper extremity range of motion strengthening, fine motor, and self-care skills. So one of the ways I would be doing this is by having the dog have an ADL vest on them that they could work on fasteners such as buttons, snaps, zippers, and lacing, as well as having the student brush the dog, and also give them hand signals for obedience commands. Those are just some of the areas that I would be addressing. The other area would be sensory and social-emotional. Students who carry the diagnosis of autism and ADHD are prone to a number of sensory difficulties, such as hyper and hyposensitivities that result in over- and under-responsive to various inputs in the environment and to touch. Research has suggested that just patting a dog initiates the release of feel-good hormones such as serotonin, prolactin, and oxytocin. And when these hormones respond, the levels of cortisol, which is the stress hormone, decreases. So what does that do for our students? Well, it helps them sustain attention. It puts them in a better comms place, decreases their hyperactivity, and makes them more readily available for optimal learning. So I'd like to talk to you about two people that I spoke with. One is a retired school teacher, a first-grade teacher, actually from the Needham School District. Her name is Pat House, and they were actually featured, her and her dog, on WBZ-TV. She has a black lab named Lucy, and for six years, Lucy went to school with her every single day in her first-grade classroom. Last week, Pat was on the phone with me for over an hour and told me many, many, many stories about how beneficial her registered dog Lucy was. But two of them I'd like to share with you this evening. One was about a little girl with a school phobia. So what happened is, this little girl would get to the front of the building, and she would start screaming, crying, digger-hill in, and fall to the ground, and the adults just couldn't manage to get her into the building. So they called on Pat and Lucy to intervene, to see what could happen. So Pat went over with Lucy, and she asked the little girl if they could approach her, and she said yes. And Pat, as she always does, and I would as well, have two leashes on her, as well as a couple of brushes and cookies and all the other stuff, asked the little girl if she would like to walk Lucy into the building. The little girl agreed. Lucy never, I mean, not Lucy, the little girl never missed another day of school because Lucy greeted this little girl every single morning at the front door, and the little girl walked with her to class, thus reducing her level of anxiety. Another story she told me about was about a little boy, and I'm sure many of the administrators can relate to this. He was in the gym having a complete meltdown with physical aggressiveness, and he was throwing items at the gym teacher. So they activated the crisis team. Now, Pat and Lucy were part of the crisis team that were activated as well. So the plan was to restrain the little boy and carry him out of the gym. That was all they had available to them. But Pat asked if she could go in with Lucy, and they said sure. So she went in, and she asked the little boy if they could sit down, and of course, they did. And the little boy pet the dog and so forth and so on, and after a while, he relaxed, and you could see the calmness come over him. She then said, you know, I have to go get my class now. They're at the other end of the building. Would you like to come with me, with Lucy? And he said, yes. This little boy got up on his own volition, walked out of the gym without further incident. I think that's pretty remarkable. And I'm trying to tell you of school districts within our state because it's more real, but the fact of the matter is, as I said, it's going on all over the world. California and Colorado are really progressive-minded, and they're in the schools, New York, New Jersey. But there's another school district I'd like to talk to you about, and that's Plymouth, over at the Nathaniel Morton Elementary School. They have a therapy dog as well, a three-year-old lab named Beamer, who accompanies his owner, Beth Keen, who's a special ed teacher, every day to school in her life skills classroom to help students achieve their IEP goals. So they were featured on Chronicle, and again, they highlighted several students. If you go online, you will see more of them, but I'm going to talk about one for time's sake. So this little boy had a phobia of fire drills. So you can just imagine, all of you have had students who perseverate and obsess. All this little boy did all day long was talk about the fire drills and look at the alarm, and it impeded his ability to function within the classroom. So what happened, they got clever, and they gave him a chore. They told him every time the fire drill rang, he would have to be in charge of Beamer and walk Beamer out. So now that's exactly what he does, and instead of talking about Beamer, I mean, the fire drill, all day long, he might talk about it once a week now. So our students benefit from canine therapy dogs and assisted therapy in many ways. It helps them initiate conversations, improve eye contact. They learn empathy by bonding emotionally with a dog, as well as facilitate learning and improve developmental skills. But I think, more importantly, most children love dogs, so they are a natural motivator. I'd like to talk to you about my dog, Sophie. We bred her mother eight years ago, and so Sophie has been born and raised in our home. She's a canine good citizen, as well as a community canine, and has her certificates from the American Kennel Club. In addition to that, Sophie also has two obedience titles, beginner novice and companion dog. And she's currently competing in her open title in obedience. We attend two training classes, obedience training classes weekly, as well as doing private trainings. Sophie is a registered therapy dog with Pet Partners, and we volunteer, and we visit down at Spalding Rehab in Cape Cod, as well as the New Bedford Jewish Convalescent Home. She thoroughly enjoys her visits, and everybody loves her. So Dr. Gifford and Michelle Roy have had the opportunity to meet Sophie, as well as some of the staff over at Bush Street. But if you'd like to meet her, we'll be at Dartmouth High School next Sunday for CPAC's Fourth Annual Community Resource and Craft Fair, along with another therapy dog team, Walter Horowitz and his dog, Tushy, which also, she's a champion dog, so that's big stuff, so we'll be there. And in addition to that, we also have a two-and-a-half-year-old Golden, who has her canine good citizen, one obedience title, and is now working towards becoming a registered therapy dog with Pet Partners. So I'd like to close with the words of Gilda Radner, who so eloquently expresses my sentiment about dogs. I think dogs are the most amazing creatures. They give unconditional love. For me, they are the role model for being alive. I'd like to thank you all for listening, and specifically, I'd like to thank the school committee in advance for giving careful consideration on approving the use of canine-assisted therapy in our school district.
Thank you very much, Kathleen.
An article here. It's the impact of canine-assisted therapy in an educational setting, and some of my references came from there, and I think it's a useful article. So if you'd like it, it's up here. You can do it.
Great. And if you could just stay up there for a few minutes, because I'm sure, I know I do, and I'm sure maybe some of my colleagues will have some questions for you.
I'll try to answer.
First of all, I honestly believe there's a lot of credence to what you were saying to the benefits to dogs. I am partial, I do have two dogs at home, but in an academic setting or in a hospital setting, when I, the use of therapy dogs, I'm completely on board with, I'm sold, completely sold on this idea. I know I have a colleague that works for the Mashpee Public Schools and principal there, and they have therapy, they have a therapy dog in Mashpee, and can't say enough about it. So there's another school district. But I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues that might have any comments or questions. Thank you. Mr. News?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. DeCampos. A couple of questions I have, and as you were speaking, these came to mind, and I know you and I had a long chit-chat the other night, and I appreciate that. Would we have to modify students, and this may go more to Bush Street, I'm not sure of our administration, but would we be modifying IEPs to have these in?
In my opinion, I can answer that because I would be working with Sophie, my registered therapy dog, on animal-assisted therapy. So the IEP goals that are already established, Sophie would be used as part of the intervention team to help the students achieve those goals that are already established. My, as we go forward, I might want to think about amending that? Has I see other issues come up? Yes. But initially, no, they would remain the same, and I would be addressing the goals on the IEP as is.
Okay. And the last question that I have, and I appreciate everything, you talked about having the buttons and all these.
Yep.
Is that almost like they're wearing, per se, a Velcro vest?
Well, actually, I would fabricate it. So I would fabricate it with different fasteners on it, and I might have several vests, so that way the students can work. I would love one with laces, so they'd learn to lace. I'd love another one with a zipper, so they'd have to learn to latch and zipper it. And buttons, I could sew right onto the vest. Yes. Well, sorry.
Continue down with Dr. Karafotos.
Kathy, that's a great job you've done, and I compliment you on the work you've done in this area.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Now, if, let's say, you had a therapy dog, and you're working with children with OT or PT issues, would the dog be in the room with you? Would you take it to classes? Would you need permission from parents? I mean, how does that all work?
Great questions. So my initial thought is to start small, in one school, and have the crate there, so when the dog is not working, she has some rest time as well. I would be targeting those students on my caseload initially, and they would stay there. And no, I would not be going into the classrooms. My hope is that the idea would grow, and staff and administrators would become more responsive to this and embrace it, and it would be throughout our school system. But I would like to start small, which is my caseload to begin with.
Can I interject real quick? Because there is already an existing policy on the books.
Right.
So it might help us to sort of conceptualize it, to understand what's in the books already. There is health language that supersedes the pet language. So the first part premise is, any health issues, no, it's not, right, it's not going to go in that area. So that supersedes all of the language that comes next. The second thing that I think is important to reiterate that's in the existing policy is this will go through individual principals, right? So we're going to, because principals know what the issues are, what the layout of their building is, where people are, who may have allergies and those sorts of concerns. So, look at Mr. Grandfellow, he's right here. We wouldn't say, we're bringing your dog in, and you can't say anything. It's ultimately up to the principal to say yea or nay and to work through that. And so there are things that exist already, there's already a policy about this, and so what we're talking about is modifying. And so some language about some of these concerns already exists in there. Just to sort of clarify as we work through the questions. Sorry.
No, it's all right.
I didn't want to interrupt your questioning, but I just want to lay that, this already is written writing.
Okay. Well, the only other thing is, so the dog would basically be working with your students that are on your list.
With parental permission.
But if you had a child with emotional issues in the building, could the principal, and, you know, could that be worked out somehow?
Absolutely. I'd be very much agreeable to that. Like I said, I'm a handler. I handle my dog. Dr. Gifford and Michelle Roy got to see firsthand. She's a very sweet and has a soft demeanor, and wonderful around patients with wheelchairs and so forth, so children, and will be, she loves children as well. So yes, I would have no problem with that if I were asked to do that, be part of a crisis team.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. I wasn't aware that they did have therapy dogs at schools.
It's been a lifelong, since I first used a Dr. Karafotos, I've wanted to bring it into the Dartmouth School. As you can ask my colleague, Kathleen Baldwin, and Rachel Dyer here, and I thank you so much for coming tonight to support me. It means a lot because, you know, I've got a little girl in my mind right now who has dyslexia, and she would so benefit from reading with this dog.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Garth?
I guess I have a couple of questions in a slightly different direction. Have to admit that at first, I thought when we were talking about accepting the use of canine therapy dogs, we were talking about students who have a particularly diagnosed anxiety issue, who already have a therapy dog in their lives, allowing that dog and encouraging that dog to be partnered with them in school. So this would be something that would be an intervention in a disability permanently in someone's life, that we were now encouraging to come into school because I do-
That's already permitted under current policy.
Right. Okay. My next question goes into, who pays for the training? Ownership of the dog?
I can answer all that.
Upkeep, all those kinds of things, especially as if we were to expand the program, and specifically, if we're talking about having an extensive use of this therapy, we're talking about more than one dog per large school, et cetera, et cetera.
And here's the great thing, Mr. Garth, it's not going to cost the district one penny. So the way it works is that we, as handlers, train our dogs because it's passion, it's passion. I know many people who have therapy dogs, they've clocked in thousands of hours going to various facilities. We pay for the training, we go through that rigorous evaluation, because I also had to take a test to demonstrate my aptitude in handling my dog. I have to anticipate my dog's needs as well. In addition to that, we go through the reevaluation. In terms of bathing and grooming, that is the handler's responsibility. Now, as I said, there are several organizations. Pet Partners is the one I am affiliated with. They have over 14,000 pet therapy teams. Therapy Dog International is another organization. So what happens is, is when you ask for volunteers from these organizations, they would come into the schools, any school, and they would volunteer their time, again, not costing the district a dime. So I see it as a progressive, out-of-the-box-thinking, holistic way to be looking at helping our students achieve.
Thank you. Any answer? Okay.
Can I, can you just make me think of something, though, Mr. Garth? Great. So what if, though, we only have one of you and one of your dogs, so what if, you know, Mr. Garth's child is getting this therapy, and I see these great and fabulous things that are happening, and I say, well, my child does a similar thing, and Dr. Karafotos does it, and all of a sudden, we don't have enough of you and Sophie to go around? Does it create a situation where we have to give the same sort of services to other students who have those needs?
Especially if we were writing the IEPs.
Without defer to you.
Right. That's, yeah, I just thought of that, right? Does it require, then, if we're giving it to some, that we then may have to give it to others?
Sure. It's a very good question.
And then, just to another point, what happens when we run into a handler who's not as thoughtful and generous as you are, and what they would want to partner with us as?
Well, that's why I specifically endorse the Pet Partners organization, because of their rigid, and a lot of people won't go through them because of the rigorous requirements. And so I would be looking toward Pet Partners to have people come in and volunteer from that particular organization. And I invite you to look them up on the website as well.
And from what I understand, our conversation was, if there was another therapist in our district that isn't trained with this dog, this is what I understood you to say, that therapist, if we got Pet Partners to come in with the dog, that person would work with our therapist-
That's right.
-who's already in our district.
So let's-
Yeah. Isn't necessary that we have more people like Kathleen, but yet, we have therapists who are willing to then work with a volunteer who has a dog that's trained.
And just for your information, Walter Horowitz with his dog, Tushy, there's a whole group out in Rhode Island. They actually go to Salve Regina. They have a Stress Buster therapy dog program, and Brown started this last year. It's all over, and it's happening, and so if Mrs. Baldwin wanted to, you know, have a therapy dog, of course, I could try to facilitate, you know, call him Walter up or whatever, and, hey, who do you know? And they would clock their hours. So the only requirement from us would be that we would have to sign off on their volunteer hours, so they get credit for it. That's pretty easy.
Okay.
And the only other thing I would add, Kathy, is that the therapy that she was using with this canine-assisted therapy is a modality.
That's right.
It's not a treatment, it's not an intervention, and we don't write interventions in IEPs. We write goals and objectives. I'm sensory integration certified, Kathy is not. So, but yet, she, we can still address these areas with different modalities. So, yes, we're IEP, do the canine- So, yes, where I plan to do the canine assisted therapy, I don't have that certification, it is a modality that she does have, that we then could assume that she services.
Okay.
And we don't write interventions really. The intervention is occupational therapy.
Sure. Dr. Gifford, how do you envision this being rolled out, as far as with Kathleen?
Again, we've spoken, and I know Kathleen's spoken to a couple of our principals who are kind of ready to roll, if so, and then she would be able to determine what student type she has on her caseload to give it a shot.
Okay.
And just, you know, start small.
Like you said, starting small in one school.
One school.
Yep, and then share what's happening.
From our perspective, you just need our blessing, or would you like, do you like a fumble vote on it, or?
That's exactly what happened in Plymouth.
Our blessing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
We would have to move forward with the policy.
We need to make, when we met, we decided that we wanted to bring it before the committee for approval, before we move forward with the wording and the policy change. But what would happen is that the policy would come back with wording change, I think, is how we would proceed.
And then you would vote the policy.
Yeah. So once you vote the policy, we can let Kathleen move along.
It wouldn't be till December at the earliest, it would be first read and second read in November.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns about-
We don't need a motion for a blessing.
No. Nope, we'll just come back with the policy.
No, but I welcome you to read the article.
We will.
Absolutely, we'll definitely take that. So thank you so much for your wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, next up, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Michelle Roy, for a presentation on state assessment data.
So if you remember our discussion last year, that this is going to be a little tricky, right? So we are, I would say, we are in year two of a four-year transition, at least. So I think I've been doing this for 15 years on data presentation. This is probably the trickiest of those 15, okay? And I'll explain what's happening statewide, and how that's a challenge for us with the presentation of the data. What happens in our schools, and the improvements that we make, and the successes, and addressing of gaps that students might have, are still continuing. It's more of where the state is in transitioning the data that makes this a little bit tricky, okay? So there'll be some slides that may have a small T in front of, some of the old acronyms like CPI or student growth, it's what the state is calling transitional growth, and transitional composite performance indicators. So, and that is because the whole state is not using the same assessment. Some districts and some schools within districts are using MCAS, and some are using PARC, and the platforms are different. Some districts and schools within districts are doing online testing, and some are doing paper, and some are switching back and forth. So there's a lot of those pieces that come together that make this sort of a perfect storm in the data world of how to explain it, okay? So I'm going to try. I tried to stick with the presentations that you were, had seen in the past, rather than go with strict composite index pieces. So then, you may see gaps, because we don't necessarily have all the data from the state. So again, our goals are to provide you an overview, to give you an update on the state timeline as best we can, give you an idea of where they're headed, and to share some progress on what we've been working on since we last met on this. So I'm going to start with the one that's most easily understandable, which is grade 10. Grade 10 is MCAS, it's been MCAS, it hasn't been in transition, right? In grade 10, we take an ELA assessment, and we take a math assessment, and we take a science assessment at the high school level. Doesn't have to be in grade 10, but we take a science assessment. So it's hard for me to use the pointer, because the computer screen is absorbing it, but you can see, and I can't move too far from the mic, but if you look at the last bar graph, all of the green bars are Dartmouth, and you can see we're pretty well holding steady at about 96, 95% proficient, which includes the category proficient or higher. And at some point, there is sort of a ceiling on that. It can only be 100%, and in a case with any student that takes an alternative assessment, that's, while they receive a progress that they're making, they're not considered at grade level, so they wouldn't be considered as proficient or advanced. The state is holding steady roughly at about 91. So we've gone up a little, but, you know, we're in that 1% plus or minus range. So for the breakout, this bar graph is telling you, okay, well, we have 96%, where do they fall? Are they advanced, are they proficient? So the blue portion is the advanced, so you can see we're a little bit lower than we were last year, but we are 50% or more advanced in ELA. And for the proficient, we're at about 45, so together, they're 96 compared to 95 last year. We will always have a few, again, in the warning category for any student who takes an alternative assessment. So we're holding steady for that in ELA. Always talk about how this compares to the state, and I've said this before, we don't want to take credit for something going up a certain amount when the state overall went up, so maybe the assessment itself was a little more accessible, same thing when it goes down. So I always like to do this with the state. What's in parentheses is the change from the previous year. So you can see for Dartmouth High School, 51% were advanced, that's a 3% decline you saw in the previous graph, that there were 54%. The state went down 2% in the advanced category, so there was a four-point change overall, okay? So that's what that chart represents, and if you go down to the bottom, where we are 96% overall proficient or advanced, that is a 1% increase. The state held steady at 91, we are 5% above the state. And the number in the middle is the growth, student growth percent, which the target is between 40 and 60, as that typical moderate range. The state median is at 50. To get part of our accountability rating, which we'll talk about a little bit later, the target is 51. So we like to get close to that. That particular piece, the student growth, when we talk about R3 through 8, is the one that's difficult for us, as, in these transitional years, because if you remember, growth is based on previous year's scores and cohorts that are established. And with so many shifting pieces of the puzzle, it's really hard for the state with that cohort in transition, some going PARC, some going MCAS, paper, online. So that's the part that gets to be difficult, is that student growth. But we're at 47. This is just an overall graph that shows how that has shifted. So far left, in that kind of light yellow, are the area where it's low, and far right is where we're very high. So if I think of them in five parts, roughly, there's 20% in each area. But I like to see them all together, because I like to see whether certain parts are growing or reducing. So you can see, what we would want to look at here in grade 10 ELA, is how we can reduce that bottom one a little bit more. It's still, there's still students who aren't making as much progress, doesn't mean they didn't score well, but they weren't making as much progress as they were expected of students like them. So I may be proficient, doesn't mean I was low-scoring, but maybe I was supposed to be a little bit higher, because the cohort I had in grade 8 and grade 7 scored better, okay? So we would want that category to go down. Yep.
If I understand correctly, that's the category that most reflects the effectiveness of the instruction in the classroom? Because if I have-
For grade 10, it impacts grade 9 and grade 10, so grade 10 has that extra factor. But it does look at the impact, yes, of growth. Yep.
But, I'm trying to wrap my brain around it, and I always think of this when I think of my own children, right? And I have one of my children, right, who was advanced, but had, actually had a very low-growth percentage, right? So, right, he did better, and he's advanced, but he's not, you know what I mean? So it doesn't necessarily mean that that's a reflection of poor instruction, it may mean there is, you know, there's some leveling out at certain levels that you can't-
So-
-grow that, grow as much, or, you know, I mean-
When you get up in the advanced area-
Right.
All right, it gets very narrow.
Right.
So a shift of one or two, either way-
Right, right.
-can impact that. So that is true.
Right. So it can reflect quality of instructor, but it may not, depending on the bundle of students who are following in there.
And it may be that, remember, it includes the previous two years. So they made them, they had improved more than they were expected, and now they've come back down to sort of where their, where their area of performance is. So there is truth, definitely, to that piece, yes. But it is a piece that we look at, because growth really is looking at a trajectory of performance, which is where we want students to sort of move along. But you're right, when you get close to the top, a shift of a small amount can really, they may end up with lower growth, even though they're advanced performing.
Right.
Yes, that's true. So, but we just like, I mean, there are pieces of this. The other thing that's not necessarily frustrating in grade 10, but we'll talk a little bit about when we get PARC, one thing that we really like to do is look at the questions, and the ones that we were successful at. We have this in grade 10, so we can drill down to the students and how they performed on certain items. We don't have that with PARC right now, okay? Which is a little frustrating for us, but we can do that here. So with students who are low-grown, we can see if there were certain areas or clusters of kids, you know, that struggled in a particular area. So those are the main three, the main graphs. So we'll do the same thing for math. So math, you can see, we've been working hard on math. It's still in that 80 range, remember that we had that high spike in 2014? We were wondering whether that was a trend, or whether it was a bubble, and we seem to be settling well, still above the previous two years of 13 and 12. We are in that 80 to 85 range, and we would like that to move up. We would like that to move up. The state is at 78, they have held steady for almost all of those years at 78, but we would like to get that moved up again, okay? We think that that's possible. ELA tends to top out at the 96, maybe we can move that 97, 98, but at some point, there is a ceiling there. We'll see the breakdown again for the levels. You can see that we have, again, not looking, 2014, we had, again, that higher group, but you can see the advanced in the blue for the math is a little bit higher this year. The two together are, again, show a decrease, when I take proficient and advanced together, but we have moved some kids, more kids up into the advanced category, and the bottom two are relatively, you know, so it needs improvement, is a little bit larger, but warning has stayed relatively the same. So this is the change from the state. So you can see, again, overall, at the bottom, while we were 85% proficient or advanced last year, we're at 81. The state, again, stays 78. We are four percentage points higher than the state. The piece that we talked about last year, which was a historical trend for the grade 10 math, was the piece we were keying on, which was the growth. It was at 22 last year, it is 29. We have been working very hard with looking at those two first courses that those students taking, the Algebra I, transitioning it to a full-year course, and the geometry, we have co-taught classes for, in both of those areas, to support students, and we put in some learning support, center time for students within their block this year. But we won't start seeing the impact, hopefully, as we move up till next year, because, remember, they're freshmen, and they won't take it till they're sophomores. But we believe we can definitely impact that, and that the department has been working hard with common goals and common assessment, common rubrics, starting to unpack all that. So we are hopeful that that's going to go back up, okay? But that is a big target for us with our goals, the admin team this year, and for the goals within that department, okay? You can see that bottom, if you remember last year, see that bottom percentage in that yellow that I talked about was quite large last year? We've cut it down a little bit more than 12%. We would definitely like to grow that top part, okay? So you can see, while in ELA, maybe this didn't stand out as much on this particular chart, but this historical growth piece is a nice piece to unpack, you can see the trend in math. So we do like that that part's decreasing, we would like to get that much, much lower, and hopefully, we'll see that shrinking in the next couple of years, okay? Science, this is all grades together, so you can see science pretty steady, but I do want to speak a couple of minutes on science. We have been, we are in transition to the new science standards. The assessment hasn't transitioned yet, and it will be another year or so. So we have made the decision to transition to those next standards now, and we did that last year at the middle school, and are doing that this year at the elementary school, at the advice and recommendation of the state, knowing that their assessment is in transition, because we can't just switch science in one year, because it requires a lot of shifting at the grade levels of what's taught in one grade level, and we can't just impact that at grade 5 without having previously switched 3 and 4. And the same thing with the grade 8 assessment, we can't just impact that at 8 without spending a few years transitioning 6 and 7. So it is holding steady, but again, the assessment, the state assessment, hasn't shifted to the new standards yet, and that is, that was one year off at least, okay? Again, there's the level chart, you can see the 14% at the top is holding steady, there's a little bit shifting in the proficient area, we would like to shrink that needs improvement area and get that down to something similar to ELA in math, so we'll be looking at that. And these are, this is grade 5, 8, and the high school altogether. The change from last year, grade 5, you can see both the state and Dartmouth have shifted down about 5, 4 and 5%. I would say, again, the state is in transition. The middle school, which is in its second year of moving, has come up a little from that initial dip, and the high school has continued to improve, but you can see, overall, we are outpacing the state in this by nine percentage points in grade 5, six percentage points in grade 8, 13 at the high school, and overall, science is 6. So while we're transitioning, we are still keeping ahead of the state transitioning, so it is a shifting, a shifting component there. All right, so PARC. This is our second year of administering PARC. We all know that the state's moving back to MCAS, but a, you know, an upgraded version of MCAS, right? And we will be taking that online this year. We have the option of choosing to do it only in 4 and 8, but we believe we're ready to go 3 through 8. Just want to know that there will probably be some sort of dip moving to the online platform that I would put out there this year. I will talk a little bit about what the state has presented on that dip in a little bit, but we did talk about that last year. If you remember, I, we spoke about that being artificially high in the growth, because we stayed with paper. So we'll have a couple of slides on that. The state has finally made a presentation showing that that is, that that is true.
Ms. Roy, did we have one elementary school last year take it?
Quinn.
Quinn took it online, okay.
Quinn took it online, they were ready to go online, their tech systems were-
Will you have that school broken out? But I'm just curious, as far-
I don't, I have, I don't have it actually with me, but-
Versus how an elementary school in Dartmouth did, taking it online versus the other elementary schools that took it paper? I was just curious.
So these districts, and I'll show you this, that went paper and paper, actually took a larger dip than a school that went from paper to online, interestingly enough, yeah, across the state, not just Dartmouth. All right, so this talks about the overall performance, we had seen quite a- We had seen quite a, quite a growth in grade three last year. We've seen them come back down. It's negative 10. They were 63% what this, what Park calls meeting expectations. It's 53 this year. Remember the change with the Park is that they are doing writing at all of those grades. The state for 2016 and 15 remain the same. That's why you don't see anything in parentheses, it's still zero percent change. So the state's at 54, we're at 53, so we are one percentage below. We have, we are taking a look at that, okay? For grade four, you can see, and this is ELA, again, that percentage has come down. The 64 compared to the state of 57 is seven above, but you can see last year, this is, we were at 64 for growth and we are at 39. In the past five years, Dartmouth has only, historically only had five scores in low growth. And this year we have five alone and I believe we can attribute, I can see part of that in those, the transitioning between platforms and assessments. Because if you remember, growth is based on cohorts like you. So if a cohort, a school district had gone online, they dipped. Now they came back up, right? Some schools went online and then they shifted back to paper because they, they saw that big dip and they went back to paper. They went really high. And schools that went paper, paper with that comparison showed us a dip as well. So there's a lot shifting there. You know, it's hard for me to explain it in any sort of meaningful way other than there's going to be some artificial highs and some artificial lows and we have to sort of wait out the growth for a couple more years till we all settle back into online, the new MCAS. And then we can really tell you what those numbers mean. Doesn't mean we're not looking at it, doesn't mean we're not unpacking student performance, students who have gaps. We, we believe we are continuing to improve and getting better. We've been in the classrooms. Teachers are, you know, at the table with the curriculum projects and the vertical teams and the horizontal teams. We see a lot of good work going on, a lot of good conversations. So I know in ELA, we see three areas that's not historical for Dartmouth, a trend for us, so I'll show you the state piece in a little bit.
The data that the state is giving us and what you're trying to interpret, that's a train wreck, what they're, the data that, let's face it, the data that they're giving us that you're trying to interpret, it's very difficult. It's not like we're, we're comparing apples to apples. We're comparing fruits to vegetables, yeah, with this.
And the, you can see the proficiency, you know, a little bit dip in three and four as far as meeting expectations. If we were to do the CPI, it's, you know, still in the 90s. It's not for ELA, still in, you know, whatever it is, 90.5.
Sure. Dr. Jenkins?
Can you unpack that last line for me? I'm a little confused how the state is at 68% overall.
So overall.
The numbers above it, they're all below 68%. So how do they come up with that number?
So they're not an average, it's, they pulled them all together and give us a three through eight percent meeting expectations. Again, it's not proficient or advanced, it's level four or five on the Park assessment and it's bringing all of the percentage of students who met that expectation for grades three through eight.
So there's data that's not on the lines above the chart that's.
It's what?
Because all of the numbers above are below 68. So I don't know how they get to 68 proficiency when there's no grade in the state that got to 68% proficiency.
Well, we have 77 in grade six.
I'm looking at the state side, not our.
State 2016.
Yeah, I don't know.
They've got 54, 57, 63, 60, 60, 64. And I, I'm not, you know, I'm not a math major, but that doesn't, what's that average to 68, right? That you can't have your average higher than every number that's in the sequence.
I can look that up. That might be simply a typo that I didn't correct that line.
I just asked because it makes a big difference, right? It looks like we're even with the state.
It doesn't make sense, so.
Should be higher.
I can look that up. That might be my error.
Thank you.
Yep. What else can I tell you about that? So you can see that the, you know, one area that's pretty steady, grade six, right? Grade six is held pretty steady, 62, 64. Growth, again, 40 to 60 is typical moderate, so that's on the high side. But, you know, I would reiterate that this is, again, a transition for student growth percentile that is not a historical trend for us. And so we're, we'll, we'll be looking at the individual data, but, and keeping an eye on that. But I would caution, the next couple of years will also be in transition as we move online and as we move back to MCAS, so just keep that in mind. For math, we can see for grade five, we have that lower piece. It was 57 for growth last year. All of the other ones are fairly steady within the 40 to 60 range. We can see grade four math, 60% meeting expectation compared to the state at 47. Grade eight at 69 compared to the state at 53 in math. So there are some good numbers there. The overall growth is at 44 versus 53 last year. So I, I wonder if some of the dips, some of those early grades for ELA might be some of the, you know, the writing requirements in grade three, some of those things that we would have questions that we wonder at as, as each of the grades unpack this, so. All right, so this is a lot up here, but you have this on your screen, okay? The next few are from the state and hopefully I can move over a little bit. So the state has finally put out some of this data. So they presented to the board, their board in their October meeting, I believe. So for example, in yellow is ELA and in that sort of red brick is math. This is state data, not Dartmouth data. So this is just showing you a little bit about the test. So meeting expectations in Park versus proficiency in MCAS. So you can see 54% of grade three students met the expectation for Park, whereas 60% were proficient or higher in MCAS. There's a 6% difference between the test. Is everybody following me? So, and if I go through, as the grades go higher, you can see at grade six, 11% difference in that, that particular standard. Level four or five proficient or higher. At grade seven, a 10%, just in the, the assessment, right? And in grade eight, a 16% difference on that in ELA. Kind of give you a little background on that. In math, at grade three, a 15% difference between Park and MCAS. Grade five, 12% and so on. So that just gives you a little background on just the test you made a decision on and that level of requirements.
There is no correlation between which types of district went with which platform. Wealthier ones went with one, urban ones went with another. I mean, they're all across the board, correct?
The next one's going to be even a little trickier than this. So this is just the test, all right? So this next piece, and you have a better view at this on paper. This is the platform and the test, all right? So for example, whoops. I'm going to put my glasses on. I don't want to walk away over there to read it, but. So for the first box on the upper left hand, those are districts that took Park online both years. Park in 15, we took Park in 16. That is not Dartmouth, right? We went paper both years. So the, see how they have the Ts there, transitional CPI? So their CPI for both the LA and math went up about 1.6, 1.7. For their growth, the change was about five points and 3.5. So they had that little bit of a dip last year, then they came back up. We talked about that last year a little bit. Schools that, I don't know what I want to call this, but got a little gun shy. They did Park online and they saw that their growth went down, so they went back to Park paper, right? That's that upper right-hand corner. You can see their growth for ELA went up 15, having dipped for going online, then back up for going back to paper to 6.2. Remember, the platform, while we're preparing for it, it's still, you have to write in the text box, you know, there's a lot that's different, you know, how you handle the math and the ELA that we transitioned to, right? Sometimes it times up, times out, we get them back on. So there are those issues. But, so they were online, then they went back to paper. So they saw the dip, so then they went back up because their performance was higher than the previous year. Remember, growth is compared to the previous year. So Park paper both years, which is where Dartmouth is. So the CPI went down a little bit, 1.2 for ELA, 0.6 increase for math, negative 10 roughly on the growth, what we talked about, what we saw in ours was a little bit more than that, but it definitely went down and six in math. You can see there are 299 schools that fall into that category. And those that were paper and then switched to online, which is where we'll be, a negative 15 on their growth and a negative seven for math, all right? So that.
Was the growth.
The growth.
In those different groups compared against just the schools that are in those groups? Or was it compared against all of the schools in those, who took that platform?
This is for Park and it was, I believe, all of them that took the Park. They didn't give a growth just to the online or a growth just to the paper. They put the whole group together. Now, it's not the whole state because some of them took MCAS, right? But it was those who had taken Park, which is a little bit why they call it transitional growth.
Okay.
That's the acronym they're calling it.
I don't see a whole lot of reliability in that number at all.
No, no, no. But there are pieces, you know, again, if we had the questions, this would be even better, but we don't have the items, which is a little frustrating.
Do they plan on, with MCAS 2.0, releasing the item analysis?
We hope.
At some point?
We hope.
Is there any guidance on that?
They released grade 10, they have always released MCAS in the past, not all of them. Remember, at the beginning, they released all of them and then they scaled that back to about, I don't know, maybe a third? Maybe, I don't think it was half, but at least a portion of them. We, we weren't getting all of them in the last couple of years except at grade 10.
Because that's, that's paramount for districts to have the item analysis.
Because we can see, you know, are they breaking down on the terminology? Are they breaking down and the question itself is just at a higher level than what we're expecting in our regular formative assessments? It's very helpful. Is the format different in math? Is it, you know, there are things that we can really unpack with the questions. We, we don't have that right now. All we can look at is what the MCAS questions were in 2016 and use some of that to help us move toward that because remember, the MCAS was transitioned. It's not fully transitioned, but they started to use some Park-like questions. So we can look at a few of those.
Okay.
So it strikes me in looking at these numbers, right? We talk about a measurement, we talk about both reliability and validity, right? Reliability is whether you're producing the same measure over and over and over again. You get on the scale, and we've all done it, right? It can't be right. You get on in the scale, you keep saying the same thing, it's reliable. This strikes me as it's a reliable measure. Everyone who's taken it on paper is getting the same thing, but it's not valid. It's not measuring the thing that you're actually intending to measure. What it is in fact measuring is the format in which the difficulties at which you're experiencing of transitioning, not actually whether students are growing or not. And I think that's really important to put out there because what we're saying is this is student growth, but it's not. It's student challenges with the format of the test is what they're measuring, not the performance.
And we talked about that last year. I mean, we did say we felt we were artificially high because schools that went online, we expected that they would dip and we stayed at paper, right? So we talked about that. Now we've got four things going on plus two things with the MCAS or Park. So we have paper, paper, paper online, online paper, right, switching, and we have an MCAS and a Park. So it's challenging to explain this. But I will tell you, you know, what we see in the classrooms and what the teachers and administrators are working on is, is relevant and we are looking at students' data that we have, that we've been using, whether it's DIBELS or STAR or our own common assessments. And we feel that students are making progress and that we are doing a good job filling in some gaps in intervention. So that's what we are putting a lot more of our emphasis on while the state's in transition and it will be another couple of years of this.
I really think too, it's important that, to note, to the viewing audience and to parents, that even at best, state data on test, state testing data, is just one piece of the puzzle of the whole individual student. So, and at this point, we don't even have really concrete, valid data to even be comparing. So even at best, it's just one piece of the child's.
But state data in general was somewhat helpful because we could see, you know, across the state, but right now is, you know, not as helpful as it has been.
Right. Putting it mildly.
Yeah. I think.
Yes.
I, I just think the most important thing is what you just said, Ms. Roy, and that is that we're working in the classroom, we're taking measures to improve student learning and that's what's going on, that's what you see, that's where the professional development is focused on. And, you know, just keep working at it, you'll, you'll see the results.
We keep moving forward.
Once we get this through, yeah.
Doing what we're doing. Getting better at our RTI process, our interventions, supporting students, you know, making those groups fluid, students, you know, transition out of that support. We bring additional students in. Our PBIS on, you know, working with students and behaviors and, you know, keeping them in the classroom as much as we can. We're working on all of that.
Just one other question. Is this test coming up this spring going to be the, the new MCAS?
It'll be MCAS.
Mm-hmm.
And we are taking it online.
Okay. But it's not the final version of the new MCAS 2?
I don't, I'm not sure they're all the way there. I'd have to look that up. I know they're transitioning. Whether this is the final step in that, I'm not sure, but they are.
And once we make that transition, will everybody be using that across the state? They won't be using Park at all then?
We don't have the choice of Park this year.
Okay, good.
It's only MCAS. Whether they're at that final revision or if they're in transitioning, I can't tell you for sure on that.
Right, it's hard to just, to compare two different tests.
You do have the choice. Not everybody is going online right now.
I know.
Or Dartmouth will be because we're going to do that to get our students ready. The requirement is only grades four and eight must. And the high school's still doing what the high school's been doing. The grade 10 is still grade 10 and that hasn't had any shift yet. We'll talk a little bit about the competency requirement.
Sure.
All right, so accountability, all right. So having said all of that, keep in mind that student growth is a part of this big formula, right? So if student growth and all of this transition gets built into this, having said that, the target is 75. All of our students are at 64. We are at that for the district, for all students. We did, we were, we didn't meet our target for ELA in math specifically. So if you remember, a few years ago in 2011, the state adapted their formula and asked us to cut the distance between where we were at that point in time to 100 and a half in six years. So that will be 2017. Not quite sure what the state's going to do at that point. Something will shift, I'm sure. So in ELA, I think our target, I was going to say about 93 and we're at 90.5 or something like that. So we didn't get all the points. Remember, this is four years of points for extra credit and CPI and all sorts of things that get calculated into this. So specifically, we didn't get for the district, we didn't get all of our targets for improving the CPI where we said we had to be by 2016, even though it's still good. It's 90.5 or 85, something for math. We didn't meet our targets and we didn't get all of the extra credit we could have gotten for improving advanced scores by 10% over what they were last year or reducing the warnings by 10% over what they were last year. So there are pieces of that formula we didn't hit. But overall, when they add the last four years and weight them, 40% for the current one, 30, 20, we're at 64. So our target is 75. We didn't meet that 75. So our target is seventy-five, we didn't meet that seventy-five. And for the high needs population, um again, that's made up of our special needs, our economically disadvantaged and our um ELL, our English language learners. Um, that group is at fifty-eight. Again, the target is still seventy-five. The economically disadvantaged group is in, was in big transition also, added to this. So they went from low income to a new formula in two thousand and fifteen. We were held harmless for that, um, that number for two thousand and fifteen and they aren't for two thousand and sixteen. We did lose some people in that group, um, that's transitioning too. And I don't know how to explain what that group is.
So has the state given any indication that they're willing before two thousand and seventeen to revisit their accountability formula? I mean, the previous slide just demonstrated that their measures aren't valid, right? Yet they're saying, we're still going to put them together in this junk formula and figure out whether you're accountable. Are, are they, are they, are they just going to say, we're just going to keep it till two thousand and seventeen? And then maybe we'll make adjustments for how you're taking it?
But what the pattern is, is what we've noticed and what others have noticed is that the commissioner tends to hold on to the requirement till it gets very close, like we would call it the eleventh hour. And then um a new proposal comes forward. So I don't know when we're going to see this, but I'm guessing, since the timeline is two thousand and seventeen, somewhere in the spring or next fall, we'll start. Usually, things happen around December for some reason, but we'll hear something about the new formula. I have not heard anything about this yet.
So, and are the superintendents, so, so the schools committees be lobbying, right? Because there seems to be clear format issues that ought to be incorporated into this formula. If you're taking it on paper or taking it online, they're producing different growth trajectories and, and that ought to be incorporated into the formula. And so I'm wondering if there's anything these groups ought to do.
I, I think to a certain extent, that is going to get washed out after MCAS two point oh comes partially online and then fully online. I think the bigger issue is what you just spoke about there, the reclassification or reformalization of what it means to be in these high need categories. There's been an awful lot of lobbying of the legislature and of the, of Department of Ed over the past eighteen months about that issue. And I don't think the political will exists in the legislature and I don't think the money exists anywhere else to, to do what needs to be done there. Um, I, I think it's a reality that whatever lobbying's out there has been done.
Well, I mean, I guess it's eventually going to wash out, but it's not going to wash out for two or three years. And I'm, I'm disinclined to say, oh, we're going to accept not making our accountability data for two or three years because of the, to be frank, a crappy formula.
Right, and they've been, they've been working with the new reauthorization, you know, with the student impact rating and the district determine measures. So I would expect more guidance on this coming forward. I don't know what they're going, with any of these, you need a baseline here. So I have no idea if they're going to keep the two thousand and eleven baseline or if they're going to wait to two thousand and seventeen to establish the baseline because with any of these, you need a place to start, right? So when do all of these come into play? When will everybody be online? When will everybody be taking MCAS and, you know, all of that? Because that's when a baseline, hopefully after, hopefully not in that specific year, hopefully
Well, for some districts, it'll be their first year online, so it's not a good year.
But I haven't heard anything on that, yeah. I haven't heard anything about that, um, but when we do, we'll, we'll bring it here.
I think there's, there's another agenda item a little further down that also plays into that too.
All right, so um we have two schools that are level one and three that are level two. Um, because we are, um, anytime you have at least one that's level two, the district is level two. Those are the top two categories in the state. Um, to be level three, you have to be in the bottom quarter performance overall percentile. So um it is, um, we are in those top two levels, okay? And we're
We, we talked last year, you could not go down in a category depending on these, you could go up.
Held harmless.
Right, we were held harmless. In your best extrapolation from these numbers, would any of our schools have gone from a one to a two?
We have two that were held harmless, the two level one schools were held harmless.
Would they have been level two if they were not?
No, nobody would be a level three. I'll show you those numbers in a minute, yep. So to be a level three, do you see that category percentile, PR, PR? That has to be um in the bottom twenty, twentieth percentile. So you can see the district doesn't get a percentile rank. DeMello is the eightieth percentile, that's based on schools um like them, which means K, even though we're K five, I believe it means K six. For Potter, forty-sixth percentile. Remember, fiftieth is median, okay? It's not like you're scoring out of, you know, like on a test. So the median is fifty, so they're pretty close to the median. Quinn is at fifty-three, middle school's at seventy-one and Dartmouth High School's at forty-five. Again, median is fifty. We have um two that are high, eighty and seventy-one, and we have three that are pretty close to the, to the middle for their categories. Okay, and I put on there um where they are in the aggregate in the high needs group. Remember, those targets were seventy-five. They're seventy-five across the board with that whole formula. So we have a couple that are fairly close, like the high school, the high needs group, something to celebrate, eighty-four. They outshot their target, which means they got the extra credit for improvement. They, they met their targets, they had some good growth. Remember, high school hasn't had all that changing. The grade ten has remained the grade ten assessment, it's been MCAS, right? And it's been paper-based. Um, so eighty-four, the aggregate is seventy-two, both very good. Quinn, you asked me about, um, Quinn's or a little bit of a drop. They were a little bit higher, they went online. I don't have the actual numbers of how many that's dropped, but we would expect them to go back up where they were. DeMello's stayed pretty steady, Potter's a little bit of a drop and the middle school's been pretty steady. You can see both of those groups, the aggregate and the high needs are pretty close to their seventy-five target. So overall, we're holding steady in this piece. And then these are some of the updates and you might want to look at your script for that. But this is the state, where the state is. I'll, I'll tell you what I know now and a little bit about what I've been hearing, all right? What's up on the, on your, on your sheet is what we know for sure. So we know that um MCAS computer base, which I talked about, is, is going to be required for everyone in the state for grades four and eight. Dartmouth will do it three through eight, all right? We know that um the goal of computer-based testing statewide for grades three through ten will be right now, the spring of two thousand and nineteen. We know that districts will again be held harmless and that's sort of a, a funny thing because they hold you harmless, but they, they still tell you
Yeah.
that you didn't make your target, so. Not really held, you held harmless number-wise, but for public release, you're not. Everybody knows that you didn't make your target, right? So. The current graduation requirement um is unchanged for MCAS for the class of two thousand and nineteen. This is the one that may see some shift because the thought is, before it becomes the graduation requirement to shift it, students should at least have the opportunity to take a computer-based test twice. Does everybody follow me? Shouldn't have it as a graduation requirement if the first time they take it is in grade ten. So the thought is that may shift, I think, to twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah.
So they would have taken it in grade eight and it will be the second time they take it in grade ten. There is no ruling on that yet, but we may see some change in, in that requirement. That's why that's in italics. Possible reinstatement of history in social science, or that has been part of their wish list. We haven't heard much on that, but it's still on their list. And they still have some technical advisories on the length of the assessments and the um, um, that they're working on the testing windows. So I already alluded to a few of these, but what, what have we been working on? Um, we have had vertical teams for at least one year for math and a couple of years for ELA writing. We're going to go across all four of the areas this year and fund those through one of our grants. So we would, um, those would be K twelve. And we would hope that those would continue and be ongoing as we move forward. So we're going to go with all four content areas, vertical teams. Horizontal teams, the elementary version, which is called CIA, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, has been in place at least one year. Um, that's a horizontal look at curriculum and a little bit vertical. We were looking at science in particular quite a bit last year. Um, they are um, um, still in practice. We have some horizontal teaming through um CPTs at the middle that Cal Robidoux works with. And we have um PLCs at the high school through department meeting time. So they do look at um some horizontal and vertical pieces there. And we are um mapping our curriculum, we are updating our units. We are refining our common assessments. When we talked about some of those interim measures, while the student impact rating may be going away, the common assessment, district determine measures is still in place and we find looking at that valuable. So we are um refining um those assessments and tweaking them um as we go along. And then for the admin team, we have some common goals. We have, as you know, our strategic plan, which is guiding those school improvement plans that are highly focused. We are um aligning or aligned with the science standards. We're looking at th- those um resources for those. We continue with the RTI and PBIS and are committed to the professional development strands that we established last year, which are the um technology integration, the um inclusion model, the um social emotional learning, which you've heard quite about, quite a bit about. And we will be looking at adding that sheltered English immersion. There are, as you've heard probably about the sheltered English more, uh endorsement that everybody needs to have. But these are specifically the fifteen PDPs for E- English language learners and special ed that teachers need for their um relicenses. So we're trying to bill all of that in um on those um supports for students and for teachers, so. Any questions?
It's a good one. Any other questions? Mr. Gar.
No, thank you. I, I, I don't have a question, Dr. Roy, but I, I absolutely want to commend you for digesting as best you can this information and presenting it to us and the community in a way. It is an absolute quagmire, I understand that. And I, I'm confident that the things that you and, and Dr. Gifford are talking about doing are effective right now. I long await the day that this becomes something much more understandable to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to our student representative, Stacy Hartman, who's with us this evening. If you want to give us a heads up of what's going on at the high school and any, anything else you want to share with us?
Well, it's pretty busy at the high school this week. It's the birthday of spirit week, so each day we have a different theme and everyone's getting ready for the pep rally and the homecoming game on Friday. But I also wanted to note that we're um using this week as a way to collect items for charity. So Dartmouth High School is holding a school-wide book drive and the National Honor Society is hosting that. And all the books gently used will go to Gives to Give this weekend, so that's really exciting. And we're also holding a canned good drive. And um the canned goods that are brought in will go directly to local food banquets. I was wanting to note, yesterday, the National Honor Society held a car wash and they raised over eight hundred dollars for their charity organization.
Wow.
Which is really exciting. Uh, so their charity is the Citizens Foundation and this is a group in Pakistan that is working on improving education there. And they're building schools in honor of victims that, uh, of an attack that took place in Pakistan last year. So that's the whole premise behind their charity organization. And to raise more money, they'll be holding a volleyball tournament November twenty-second at the high school and it'll be three dollars for students to attend and five dollars for adults to attend. So they're actually going to be coming to the school committee meeting in December to present the organization that they're working for, so people in the community can understand who they're raising money for. And um, and this will make them want to donate more and so we can raise enough money for the organization.
That's awesome.
Lastly, this week, um, students at Dartmouth High School will be hosting a voter registration drive during the lunch shifts because the deadline to register to vote is this week. And there's a large portion of seniors that will be eighteen before the November election. So we're trying to get those students really engaged in civics and in their community. And also, we're going to be holding a mock election on November eighth for the entire student body, so everyone can really be engaged in the political process that's taking place in our country right now. And that's about it.
And it's a big one, to say the least. Dr. Jenkins.
So the new mass, uh, election reform bill that we passed allows sixteen-year-olds to pre-register for the election. Um, so you might want to look at registering sixteen and seventeen-year-olds too because they'll be able to vote when they turn eighteen.
I think the other thing is, are you using the online platform or the paper platform?
Online platform.
Because early voting starts in Massachusetts on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, next Monday.
So you can register the end of this week and you can vote the following week.
Yep.
Well, thank you for your update and if you have, feel free if you have any other comments or questions on any, any of our discussions tonight, to please chime in.
I, I just have a question.
Yes.
On the charity, Stacy, about Pakistan, you said you're having a volleyball game in November?
Yes.
And then the, the students who are involved in this are coming in in December? To talk to, would it be better for them to come in before the volleyball game, just so the public would know more about?
That might be a good idea, I should bring that up. It's actually a good idea.
Thank you.
I'll let them know.
All right.
Hey, next up, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gifford uh for, under new business for.
Yeah, um, as you, as you remember, um, during our topic discussion meeting, the committee asked that we start the discussion about homework. And just to give you some background, as you might recall, that last year we showed the movie, the documentary Race to Nowhere a few times. We, we showed it to staff, we showed it to the community. We also, uh, to, to kind of have that conversation started about stress and anxiety, et cetera. And um Ms. Roy and I met with the ILT a number of times throughout the year as well and listened to them talk about it and their thoughts about homework. This was more, you know, particularly at the high school level where a lot of the kids are, you know, experiencing advanced placement classes, things like that, where the burden of the homework might be too much. So um along with that, I thought tonight we might have a little, just to let you know that we're thinking about um the idea which we brought up to the ILT and also, um, I've had some parents ask me about it, to eliminate homework on the vacation weeks. Um, I've had a couple of parents send me emails over time about the idea of them going on a vacation, paying for this cruise or whatever it might be. And lo and behold, students are frantically trying to research, get Wi-Fi connection, write papers when they're taking a family vacation. So given the conversation we had with the ILT, as well as the rest of the staff across the last year with our focus on the stress and anxiety, um, we thought a nice place to start might be, um, given that we do not have a specific policy about homework in the district, um, but might be that we just eliminate it for those vocation weeks coming up, the school vacation weeks, um, and see how that goes. So it's, you know, it's, again, we don't have a policy, we don't have a, a vote per se, but just to hear your thoughts on that and um see how we might proceed for the year on that.
Comments, questions, thoughts? Yes, Mr. James.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You kind of get bounced both ways around this. I think a little bit of homework is good because it helps to reinforce what the students have learned during the day type of deal. But, you know, I don't want to see them bogged down with, you know, coming home with, you know, four, five, six hours of homework type of deal. The flip side of that becomes when they get to college and they've got their syllabuses and, you know, they've got, they've got their work that they've got to get done type of deal. So, you know, maybe a little bit of homework during the school year on a nightly basis, you know, forty-five minutes, an hour type of deal, depending. Maybe you've got to, you know, get the teachers all on board, the staff all on board so the different classes a different night. It's not, you know, yeah, you've got, you know, four subjects and everybody gives you an hour. Well, you're, you're right back to where you didn't want to be with, with four hours of homework type of deal. But, you know, spread it out so that it gets, you know, they've got a little bit of reinforcements, they've learned some time management skills. And when they get, get into college, and no disrespect to my colleagues And when they get into college, and no disrespect to my colleagues here, that are college professors, that, you know, they've got a little bit of, you know, some good study habits to move in, number one. And as far as like the, with, you know, no homework for school vacations, I'm fine with that.
Dr. Jenkins.
So I've been pushing also to put this on the agenda, and I think this is one of the areas where research can really inform our decision-making. There's not a lot of areas in social science research where the results are consistent. It tends to be sometimes we find this, sometimes we find that. But with homework, it's really pretty clear. In elementary school, I'm not sure there's any scholarly studies that have found positive benefits to homework. Maybe a little bit here, a little bit there, that's well thought out a project, but consistent like worksheets have a negative effect on students' perception of schools, that makes them less willing to go to school, they're less happy. And for me, that seems to be the worst outcome that we can have, to have students not be happy, and the research backs that up. It does suggest that you can add a little bit of homework as you go, but even in high school, that there's a max, right? That after a certain point, in my understanding, the research says in high school, it's about it, two hours, that anything beyond that produces negative outcomes. And so I'm happy to see, I know in my home, both my kids are in the middle school, they occasionally have homework, we never fight about it. Because when they have homework, it's not, they have two hours every night, they have some homework, they sit down and they do it, and then the evenings are spent reading books, which is great. And so I'm happy to see us start having these discussions and making these moves, but particularly to ground our decision-making in what the research suggests is best for our kids. And so I think the vacation policy is a great first step, and I'm willing to push that conversation even further about what we're doing in all of our schools and all of our grades, and whether those policies are consistent with what the research shows.
Excellent point. Mr. Garth?
I'm not fully comfortable with the conversations that are going on, not just in our community, but around the country with respect to homework, because I think it flies in the face of what I thought was a very positive trend a handful of years ago that involved flipping the classroom around, where the access to technology and time and exploration outside of school was much more vast than the 45 or 90 minutes in a classroom. And so the idea of leveraging that was having positive effects on what was happening in the class as students were preparing for that. And I would hate to see, you know, that trend completely wiped out. I think I agree with one of the points that Dr. Jenkins pointed out, that there's a strong distinction between good homework and not good homework. And I think if we can provide the kind of professional development to our staff that promotes the, a greater amount of good homework and reduces the amount that is somewhat interfering with happiness in schools, I think that's something we can look towards. As far as the vacation restriction goes, I do have some trouble with a blanket policy like that, that allows one segment of our student population who has access to those kinds of vacations to be absolved from something at the detriment of another group of students who might benefit because they don't have the opportunity to go explore a new place or a new culture or a new something, but for the homework that would be assigned that week that would give them the opportunity to explore something that they would not ordinarily have. In a sense, I think if we allow it, you know, some sort of an optional base, or if we provide some strong guidance about what happens in those weeks, we could provide a head start to some students, okay, much in line with what we do in our head start programs, okay, but on a week-to-week basis or month-to-month basis. And, you know, those students who have the affluence and wealth and opportunity to go away, they go away and get the benefits in other ways.
I can start if you want.
Why don't you? I'm thinking that one through.
Well, I see, I see several different points here for us to consider. One, obviously, what Dr. Gifford brought up about homework over vacation periods, as well as a deeper look at homework at grade levels, you know, specifically elementary versus middle versus high school, as well as even at the high school level where Dr. Jenkins said, you know, research shows that two hours is probably the max, developing some type of policy around, you know, the approximate amount of homework. So at the high school level. So I see this broken up into several different chunks. I definitely think, you know, at the elementary level, I have two children, one has, is in high school now, the other one is still in elementary school, vastly different personalities, which, and vastly different study habits, which I'm sure some of your children out there as well probably, probably have. And it was a constant battle for my, for my older one when she was in elementary school with homework. It was, we were spending two to three, some nights with two to three hours a night in elementary school on homework. And some of it, just worksheets. And for me, I think it was, and it ends up to some point being the parents that end up sitting there with their child, which is, I'm a firm believer in helping your, helping your child succeed, but doing the work for them ultimately in elementary school. And I don't see the takeaway being that big with homework in elementary, at the elementary level. So, you know, as we continue this conversation moving forward, I would be a firm believer at really looking at, you know, the types of written homework assigned at the elementary level, and whether it's just, you know, reading, you know, reading assignments and whatnot for, to take home. As far as the vacation policy, the extended weekend policy for homework, I think there is some credence to that. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Garth, which, you know, as far as a blanket statement. But I do kind of have, as being someone who's been there, have a problem with, you know, you're in the middle of the Atlantic, and not even, not even so much on a vacation, but you just, if...
Maybe you're in your camper in the middle of the woods.
Exactly. Well, whatever it may be, just spending the time, having your child devote a lot of time and effort during a family vacation on a project. So I would, I would be in favor, you know, of some type of policy for school vacations. As far as putting it into a policy, I really think that I'd love to see the policy subcommittee take this further.
Right.
And really look into some different, some different policy options for the full committee. And let's see, let's see where it takes us down the road. But at least, I think to start small, I don't see that as a bad idea.
Something that's true.
Right.
I just would like to kind of follow up on a couple of the statements. I have to say, and you may have noted at the beginning of the year, we had a little discussion on Facebook about homework at some of the elementaries, but I have to say, we're very pleased with the direction that the elementary teachers have been taking, from what I've seen and, you know, conversed with some of the principals about it. From our perspective, it is becoming a much more thoughtful way that they're giving, what the kind of assignments that they're giving kids, and that's what we want to see, thoughtful, balanced, reading, of course. But I think you're seeing, and from what I'm seeing in our elementaries, the way, the basic worksheet things that we're all so used to. Again, I have my son in Michigan who texts me for the, his fifth grade student because she's doing math, and I get pictures of the math worksheets. So mom from Massachusetts can help in Michigan. So now grandma's stressed, you know. But I do see a real, a move toward more quality assignments that are happening. So hopefully with our discussion, even last year with our homework discussion, our Race to Nowhere, that's kind of transferring into this year. We still have more work to do, of course, but I do see that great progress happening. And we are definitely advocates, I would say, like Mr. Noon said, there's pros and cons. There's good homework and there's good assignments and there's good practice, and then there's, what am I kind of doing this for, for hours?
Right.
So, you know, I, the conversation definitely has to continue with our policy sub, but we thought at least to be able to send a guidance to the teachers for now, the holiday weeks are starting to come up and say, you know, let's give this a shot.
Right. I... Yep.
Just to take the, and I understand what Mr. Garth is saying here, and everyone has said about the vacation weeks and such, if, you know, somewhere down the line, we, there needs to be homework over the holidays, the vacations and such, just so that the students, you know, don't forget type of deal. Maybe, you know, you can do that, but again, make it not so that they're having to do research or projects or things of this nature. So again, you know, you're in the middle of the Atlantic on XYZ cruise ship and got to pay, you know, $40 a minute for Wi-Fi access type of deal. But, you know, something, something of that nature, you know, I guess for anything else, just to keep the brain sharp.
Sure. Stacy, one second, your thoughts?
From the high school standpoint, I view homework as something to reinforce what you learned that day in class. So like before a vacation, usually the teachers try to wrap up everything so you don't forget whatever you learn. So usually my teachers will wrap up the unit. But then sometimes they'll assign a huge project to do over the break. So I don't really think that that has a positive impact because it's not really keeping you from forgetting or remembering anything since that unit was already wrapped up. I just feel like at that point, it's added stress during your break.
Okay.
So I support the vacation policy.
Thank you for your input.
Words of wisdom.
During the school week.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
On a long break.
Mr. Garth?
I just want to point out, let us not be so naive of the $40 per minute, and in that time, is exclusively for research.
There you go.
Fair enough, yes.
So the other thing I don't, I don't want to forget, right, is we're thinking about the homework policy as benefiting our most affluent children. But of course, so many of our children don't have supports at home. So when we send homework at home, there are some parents who will sit down for two hours and work through things. But there are so many of our children who don't have that at home. And so relying on outside-of-class work to help kids can reinforce socioeconomic biases when you don't have the sort of support you need at home to do that. And so having a smaller homework and a more balanced part of our, means that, that all kids are closer to a level playing field. And so I think sometimes, yeah, it is, you know, you're on the cruise ship and you don't want to pay, but sometimes it's a kid is at home on break, and they don't have the support to help them work through, right? My poor kids, right, when they had to build dioramas, they were on their own. But I know, you look through Facebook, and there are parents, you know, building dioramas and doing everything. So I think being thoughtful about it helps us engage parents in a positive way in the school, but not disadvantaging those kids who might not have those supports at home.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
I think it's all been said.
So are we all?
I'm in favor.
Are we in agreement? Do you want to, do we need to take a symbolic vote, or?
I mean, I don't, I'd rather not vote on a notion, I might rather vote on a policy.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we can give some, you know, mixed messages that way.
So, we're...
You're in favor of this...
Yes. Exactly.
No homework on the vacation weeks.
On the vacation weeks.
All right.
And I'd like to see it taken further at the subcommittee.
And then, yeah, we'll have the subcommittee start working on official policy.
Beautiful. Next up, I asked to have some, this item placed on the agenda to have a conversation about question two, that'll be coming up at the November eleventh, at the November election regarding lifting the cap on charter schools. And I'm going to start off by just sharing over with Dr. Gifford for a few minutes for her to brief us on charter schools.
One thing, before I start, I did, Ms. Viera is here, and she would like to speak on that first, if the chair doesn't mind, so.
Sure.
We didn't think she'd have enough time during public speak, so.
Okay, I will entertain that. Absolutely.
I know, we had a long meeting today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, I just, I wanted to ask the school committee to, to consider supporting, voting no on two. As a school committee, sharing that with the residents of Dartmouth, I think, would be really important for most folks to better understand that even though our district doesn't have charter schools, that we are affected in a very small amount financially presently. We have a few students that utilize charter schools in our area. But more importantly, because what happens in the case of charter schools, right now, the, like everything else in the news relative to politics, things are very misleading. And when we have folks saying that they do work for charter schools because they are public schools, yes, they are in the sense that they take public funding, but right now, there are the districts that have students on waiting lists, most of those districts haven't even reached their cap. So to lift the cap on the charter schools basically is unfair because it's really attacking school districts that are already disadvantaged, whether it be economically, whether it be, there are a number of services, transient students. We look at our two very, our cities that are very close to us, Fall River and New Bedford, they stand to lose a lot if the charter cap gets raised. They are, Fall River is at its max. I believe New Bedford is not quite there. However, what happens is, we look at a number of students that will leave and to go into a charter school. The charter school itself, we talked about research and statistics, the data doesn't support the success. But what will happen is that local funds will, will be siphoned off. The sending district has to pay for those students, which we recognize our need and our financial obligation to do so. But then if those students don't make it, and then they get bounced back to the district, the district now has lost that money, but still has to then incur the cost of maintaining to be able to educate that student. Many of the costs that we have in the district are fixed anyway. So if you look at class size, whether your class size is 21 or 27, takeaway per pupil spending, your fixed costs don't change. So, anyway, a number of us at the local level in the DEA, as well as my position on the board with MTA, we've been working quite hard to try to get folks to understand that raising the cap, we're not against charter schools per se, but raising the cap is not going to make a difference in a number of districts as far as that have waiting lists, there are still going to be waiting lists. I can stand up here and say, you know, union-wise, I'm against them because they don't support unions. What bothers me about the fact that they don't support unions is that teacher turnover is very, very high. So students that start out in a charter school, if they stay at a charter school that can educate them for four or five years, they may have a number of teachers that move in and out, but they may end up with a teacher that ends up, in some cases, going from one grade level to another. And no disrespect to my colleagues, sometimes those teachers aren't really certified to go from one grade level to another, but they have to meet the needs of those students because they can't maintain staff. Being run by a corporation or private business doesn't allow you to necessarily support yourself and your colleagues, so working in a charter school is not always cracked up to be at times. So teachers do leave. Many of the teachers that come to be employed here in this district have left charter schools. So I was just hoping that I could basically just maybe share a little bit of the information, kind of ask any questions that you folks may have that I might be able to help you with, and to let you know that the DEA as well as the MTA is definitely supporting no on two, if anyone is at all interested in canvassing. Not my style, but I don't mind, you know, being, standing on a corner. That, it's left me right now, just, not canvassing, but just visibility. We're just doing some visibility work over the next few weekends. And I also have some signs, if anyone would like a lawn sign, no on two. And if there's anything else I could possibly do for you folks, just please let me know, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Viera. You said a lot of probably what we'll, what we'll be talking about. So my goal, at the hope of, at the end of this discussion here, is to actually entertain a motion to approve a resolution for the Dartmouth School Committee opposing question two. So that being said, do you have?
The only thing I'll mention is, as you know, the Mass Association did put out their statement on the charter school amendment as well. And I just wanted to mention that for our school, we were talking about it today, $133 last year.
Right.
$133,000 left our district for just the number of students we have.
That was 11 students.
11 students, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, there is a drain, and I think that the commercials are misleading when they say it increases funding for public schools, because they are a public school. But we do lose the funding. And as you know, the article is looking to raise the cap where they could add 12 additional charter schools every year. And where we are in the vicinity, I think we'd be a prime location.
I agree. We're right between New Bedford and Fall River. Where New Bedford, I believe, has two or three, and Fall River has two or three as well.
So that's really all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. I oppose question two for so many reasons. I think I have, I do have a real problem with some of the advertisement that's out there. It's very misleading. First of all, charter schools are, they're public schools in the fact that they take public money. They are run by, as you all probably know, private, private boards. They are, I think it's the, it's a way of taking the public out of education and basically trying to privatize... and basically trying to privatize education to some extent. I, I do believe that charter schools have a place, but right now, the way the, the budget, the, the formula for, for the budget is, is creating the monies is that it's just, it's not, it does not make any sense at this time to raise the, the cap on charter schools. It, it just doesn't. And I'll leave it at that for right now, but thoughts, comments, questions? Mr. Garth?
I, I've got a laundry list of reasons.
Okay, well, let's keep it under five minutes.
I'll make it as quick as I can. I will start with saying, I don't think that charter schools are a bad idea. I think, to borrow Dr. Jenkins' phrase, they are a crappy application. These schools were started as part of the Ed reform movement with the promise that we would experiment with things in education to see what we could do to improve public schools in Massachusetts, which we know we needed help. To my knowledge, there's not been a single sharing event in the history of charter schools in Massachusetts where somebody said, hey, this is the idea we had, this is why it worked. I'm not even sure that public schools in many cases would have the capacity to adopt them, okay? Secondly, I think the motive that is behind question two has very little to do with helping a single student in Massachusetts. It is about a much more large national movement of wanting to affect change in other states using Massachusetts as an example because we are the best public education system in the state. And the irony of this is, the proponents of question two want to say, see, in the best state in Massachusetts, they adopted charter schools, so you should too. The idea of that is ridiculous on this notion. Why do you need them here for the best state in the union? I think similarly, the companies that are funding these ads have the self-interest because they want more schools so they can physically build more schools and make more money. I think some of the alternatives that these charter schools were meant to solve already exist. You mentioned that Fall River and New Bedford each have two or three charter schools. There are ten alternatives in New Bedford alone if you don't want to attend the public schools. We are one of them by adopting school choice last year. We are part of that, okay? And I know that I have heard from some people in town that there's a certain hypocrisy that we in Dartmouth are willing to be a school choice outlet, but we're not in favor of, of the charter schools. There is a vastly different animal to that. Because if the people of Dartmouth don't like the discussion, don't like our move to school choice, they have the opportunity in April to vote us out. If a charter school comes into this community, the public has absolutely no say whatsoever about anything that happens in that school, including the policies, the budgeting, the leadership, nothing. We don't have to look very far besides looking at New Bedford. The mayor of New Bedford did not want the City of the Hill, the City on the Hill school to come into the city. They came in anyway.
That's right.
Not doing particularly well, okay? And the last thing that I'll say, I am deathly afraid, as Dr. Gifford just pointed out, deathly afraid of our geography right now. Because I think if you raise the cap on charter schools in Massachusetts, we are the prime location for a charter school to come in. If it wouldn't be, okay, Sturgis, it would be a partner of Sturgis. And what that school has done to the communities of Cape Cod has decimated the public school communities on Cape Cod and has created an educational alternative that is so unfair, that is so racially, ethnically, and financially biased. It would, it is so counter to the measure, the advertising that is being espoused throughout the state about helping poor kids get better schools, okay? I think, you know, I can't, my, my level of frustration with those who support question two is endless.
Well said. Dr. Jenkins?
So I'll follow up, you know, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I'll just, as a political scientist, social scientist, I'll follow up with two things. I blog with a group of other politics professors for WGBH. And we've been doing a lot of blogging about question two and about how the backing behind it is misleading. My most recent blog post was about probably, people all saw the headlines in the Globe and the Herald about how public schools, charters don't take money away from public schools. I blog extensively about this, about the factual inaccuracies in that report. For instance, they only look at year one, when the state reimburses at seventy-five percent. And there's one sentence in the report that says, scenarios may diverge in subsequent years. Well, of course they do because the state only reimburses for twenty-five percent in subsequent years. And then it goes down to zero. So, yeah, they do diverge. The other thing that my colleague has blogged extensively about that I will point out, we all know people who are maybe good meeting people, who really do care about the education of kids who are involved in charters. And these people have become the front for the yes on question two. But if you look at what's going on, this is all fueled by what we call dark money, right? If people are truly for good schools and they ought to be willing to stand up and say that they're donating money in support of good schools, if this is what it's about, as opposed to silently donating money to organizations where we can't tell where the money's coming from. Which leads me to the conclusion that this is funded by a lot of, I have a different take on it maybe than Mr. Garth. It is, I think, right wing organizations, but it's an attempt to break teachers' unions, plain and simple. And I can't support that. I know we don't always see eye to eye with our teachers' unions, but I respect them and the work that they do in representing the interests of our teachers. And so I can't support an effort to, to undo that.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Yes, Dr. Garth Fotos.
I will just piggyback on what everybody said because I certainly am against question two. To me, the most important, there's nothing to me that's more important than public education and what it gives to all students regardless of their background, economical status, or anything else. And anything that detracts from our public schools, to me, is not something we should be supporting. Even in today's paper, there were a number of politicians that discussed why question two should be voted no on. So I think everybody has really covered it. But to me, anything that detracts from public education, anywhere where they're going to take money away from what we work so hard to get and what we need in so many different ways is detrimental to our school system. So I certainly hope that our, our voters will not support a charter school resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Garth Fotos. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I too am opposed to, to question two, have been opposed to it since I found out it was going to be on the ballot. I was at a MMA legislative breakfast this past Friday and they have come out as a group, Mass Municipal Association, they've come out, opposed to question two. So, which is good. Yeah, Mrs. Viera talked about, you know, the fixed costs. That's there in the, you know, you know, heating, utilities, building insurance, that's all their type of deal. The one thing that everybody also forgets is the fact that the transportation costs that go for a charter school, you know, the community that that school is in is responsible for transporting, you know, transporting those students. And, you know, you all of a sudden, you know, you're working on your budget and you all of a sudden find out in, you know, February or March that, you know, XYZ charter school that is now in your community says, oh, and no, by the way, my transportation next year is nine hundred thousand dollars, and they put their hand out. You know, talk about throwing a budget into, budgets into a flex. So, I mean, you know, I've got family that work and have worked in charter schools and I appreciate what they do type of deal, but I can't, you know, at this point in time, you know, you opened the paper this morning and, you know, the state's three hundred million dollar shot right now. So they've got some decisions that they've got to make. Yeah, they're hopefully not going to touch, you know, chapter seventy type of deal. But if they start looking at and saying, well, you know, we've got, you know, circuit breaker money we're going to cut or we're going to, you know, do some nine C cuts, or this is going to happen, this grant's going to go, that grant's going to go. You know, where is it, where is it going to stop? Type of deal, so.
I think it was said that somewhere in the ballpark of over four hundred million dollars is being siphoned out of public education into charter schools across the Commonwealth.
Wouldn't be surprised.
Just one more comment to one of Mr. Nunes's points because I think some of the community would say, well, we're giving money to the greater New Bedford Regional District, okay, for transportation, for, for our assessment. How is that any different than a charter school? And the answer is, we at least at some point have the opportunity to join that partnership. So the people in this community, they have elected representatives, they have people they can go and talk to. If at some point they want to break that agreement, there is a process that they can use. We have no such opportunities.
Sorry, we have two members of this town on that board.
We have no such opportunity with a charter school to come in. And it's exactly as Mr. Nunes said. Here's the number I, I want, give it to me, and you have no recourse to say no.
No, all excellent points. With that, you know, I'm not going to beat a dead horse to death here. I think I have an idea where this is going to go. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution that the Dartmouth School Committee opposes question two.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Mr. Garth on the motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I will send an email to Mr. Kuchar, the president of MASC, letting him know that we voted this out.
I was just going to ask if, you know.
Yeah, how to, just to let him know because there's, right now, the, we join over one of, we're one of now over a hundred fifty school districts across.
Hundred eighty, it's up to now.
Up to a hundred eighty school districts across the Commonwealth that have voted to oppose question two.
Yeah, I was contacted also by a colleague in the New Bedford School Committee and they're doing a rally on Sunday to highlight all of the school committees across the Commonwealth that are, that are, that are, have come out and opposed to this. And I believe he's going to deliver those petitions to the governor's office or a list of the schools on Monday is what I heard. But I guess they're doing rallies around the state, so there's going to be one in New Bedford. So keep an eye out for information on that on Sunday.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next up, my computer has died. I believe it is the superintendent's evaluation timeline.
Just quick, I know it's getting late.
It's been a long, yeah.
You had mentioned the idea of doing a two-year evaluation process now that we've had our one under the belt. So I put that out there. As you know, we can put staff on two-year evaluation process, which still you do kind of a mid-cycle, which would be a formative assessment discussion kind of like we did last year halfway through. But then you wouldn't have to go through that whole process of the formal summative as well. So Mr. Oliver mentioned it to me last week, the last meeting, if that's so, I put it on. And also with that, I'd like to make sure that we have our little subcommittee again to look over the goals because I would still craft my goals, which I've been doing, so.
Sure. First of all, I don't have a problem with the chair staying on, that subcommittee, you know, Dr. Jenkins.
Can do it.
That'd be great, if you were willing, just for consistency purposes. And then it can be someone else's next year. I will be stepping down, that's for sure, this chair. So thoughts as far as moving to a two-year evaluation process? I know one of the, the only thoughts that I had in having this conversation with Dr. Gifford was just having it two, over a two-year period with, for consistency purposes, when the school committee members, you know, come in and go in each year depending on, you know, what the terms are. That's the only concern I had, but I know that administrators in the district, they have the option, you have the option of putting them on two-year plans. And I just felt that, you know, now that the initial year one with Dr. Gifford has, has wrapped up and we, obviously, we evaluated her last spring or last early summer, now would be the opportunity to consider a two-year cycle. So any thoughts, problems, questions? Yes, Mr. Garth?
The only question I have, and I think we talked about this once before. The superintendent's on a three-year contract.
Yep.
That goes from a fixed period of time to another fixed period of time. And I think for consistency's sake, we would want an evaluation system that works with that timeline and then the subsequent timelines that come afterwards. So I don't know if we're talking about a straight twenty-four month evaluation plan, something along the line of a twenty-month evaluation plan. And then what would we come up with after that? So that each of our superintendents, you know, has something that they can rely on. You know, I, I think that's just something we, we need to.
That's a good point. I can't, I couldn't see it being a straight twenty-four month contract. You know, based, I mean, straight twenty-four month evaluation cycle based on the superintendent's contract. So, good point. Yes, Dr. Jenkins?
I would love to say yes to this because it would mean less work for us, right? But my concern is, is right, is that you, again, with the timing of the contract, with a two-year evaluation cycle and a three-year, right, the goal of evaluation is to give people productive feedback that allows them to improve. And so do we always do it in year one of a three-year con, but you, there's only one chance to give someone feedback in a three-year cycle.
There is the mid-cycle.
There is, but I don't wonder if, you know, doing it every year allows people the opportunity to. And maybe we, you know, after we've done five of them or so, I don't know. But I, I get concerned about only having really one chance for improvement, right? If there's an issue that comes up.
Well, and similarly, the validity, if you have a midterm that looks in one direction, but a formative that for other reasons looks somewhere different, I think you're, you're in some problematic territory at that point.
I'm, I'm fine either way as well. I just wanted to put it out there. Any, either way, either, either way works for me. I'm, I'm good, you know. And if you were able.
I, I think then, I think with, after everything that's been said, I think we should probably just, just stick with what we have. Stick with what we have and.
So I will, for our next meeting, we can meet prior and then I'll draft a timeline again so they'll all kind of know where we are with that. That's fine.
Perfect.
All right.
That sounds good. And then continuing with Dr. Gifford, superintendent's update.
I'm not going to say much because it's really getting late. I'll just let you know that we did, I don't know, meeting to meeting now, we did roll out our emergency management plan with our staff last week and our principals received feedback of how that went, et cetera. So we'll be following up with that. I think it went really well. We bounced around the district and saw that happening. We are going to now follow up. We're thinking maybe early November with a, a community or parent presentation just to give highlights, again, those major changes of folks so they know what we're doing when we have a bomb threat or that kind of thing, or why we didn't evacuate. Just so big highlights that parents will understand, like Alice, et cetera. So that's kind of our next step. And then more work will be done at the schools, of course, with the staff and the students. But I think it went really well. We're really pleased with the product. Matter of fact, our middle school used our shelter in place this morning with our student issue that we had. So, and they said that went well. The only other thing I will mention, I had a bunch of, but I won't, is Mr. Parati is here, as you know, with his students. And he has created a YouTube site or, which is, I think we put it on our Facebook page. The folks can go on that and look at it where the link is because our kids are doing some fabulous work. We have the Tribe, it's the news station, and we also have a student that's doing her own after-school, what's it called? Right after-school with Riley or after-school with Riley. She's, she's going to be the next, I don't know, Savannah Guthrie, whatever her name is, that lady there. So if you can go on and, and like it, the YouTube page, they have to subscribe so that he can get more, you know, audience.
Okay.
And it's, it's really good. We're really, really pleased with what's going on. So that's all. I'll say no more.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Gifford. I don't have anything moving forward, Dr. Jenkins.
I'm sorry, I know we all want to go to home.
That's all right.
But this is going to be, now that everyone's gone, I'm going to remind everyone that the calling B is November eleventh. And I.
That's Veterans Day.
What?
That's Veterans Day.
I don't, I'm sorry, the third. I'm looking at the eleven, eleven, three. Chris is looking at my computer. It's late. I'm getting a little fuzzy. The third of November at seven o'clock, I cannot be part of a school committee team.
Oh, here we go again.
Last year, and so I'm hopeful to recruit, to groom, whatever you want to call it, some, three of my fellow school committee members to be on a team. And I'm hopeful that we will sponsor a team as well. Now, if you can't make it, that's okay. We could sponsor and not field a team. Like maybe we can have our student representative put together a team to represent us. We could put her on.
Oh, I like.
Honor Society members?
We put together a National Honor Society team today.
Good.
Okay.
I would, I would like at the very least, could we agree to sponsor a team, do we think?
Yes.
So I will send you all an email about the, the monetary contribution, so that would be great. If you are willing to participate, please let me know. And if not, I can let the DEF know that we are sponsoring a team and ask them to find either teachers or students to, that we can sponsor.
As long as I don't have anything else on my calendar, I will be there.
Great, thank you.
I unfortunately do have something on my calendar, which is probably better for all of you.
I don't know. I'm not sure.
Excellent, thank you. And if anybody else wants to sponsor a team, please feel free to contact me. My email information is on the website. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Garth.
I realize this doesn't air until later in the week, but I would like to use the power of positive thinking to thank Town Meeting for funding our requests on the capital improvement plan tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
All that money is going to go to good use, is going to help students in ways that, you know, are very, very important.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just one.
Yes.
Good on Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hook on, Mr. Chairman. Just a thank you to everyone that helped us out with our home show, Mr. Garth presenting trophies Columbus Day weekend. We managed to beat the rain, so that was, that was barely, but that's fine. We beat the rain, which was good. Last Saturday, we were in, the band was in Cranston, we took first place with 91, 525. We were at New Bedford High School yesterday afternoon, we got a 92, 7. So, the next three weekends, we end up with Connecticut runs, we're going to Sutherlandton this weekend, then we go to Bristol, Connecticut, and then we go to Bridgeport, Connecticut, all working towards Veterans Day weekend on the, the Saturday, going to MetLife Stadium for national finals, type of deal. And then we've got NESBA finals on October 30th in Medford this year. They were supposed to be in Lawrence, but everybody knows what happened to the artificial turf in Lawrence a couple of weeks ago, so they've had to move, move finals and they've moved them over to Medford, so we've got that coming up in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, that's what's up with the band.
Best of luck to the band.
Thank you.
And last but not least, just a reminder, CPAC has their resource there on Sunday.
Yes, next on Sunday, yep.
10 to 3, I believe it is, so.
Yep. Looking forward to that. That grows and grows every year.
Yep. Which is good.
All right. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is scheduled for Monday, November 7, 2016. At this time, I will entertain a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Dr. Karafotos on the motion, any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Bush.
We don't need to...
We don't need, that's right, no executive session.
No rolls.
It's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.